Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May tenth session of the North Hill School Board. We would call the meeting to order. We'd like to stand for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Once again, welcome, everybody. We are going to, before we can start, I do want to mention that the board held an executive session this evening prior to the meeting, and we don't plan on holding one afterward, so I just wanted to make that announcement. We can now move on to item three, and that would be the approval of the minutes. This is a reference to the minutes of April fifth, 2018 work session legislative meeting, and the April twelfth, 2018 legislative meeting per the attached. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the minutes from April five, 2018 work session legislative meeting, and the April twelfth, 2018 legislative meeting per the attached.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have to abstain.
Okay. Arlene's abstaining.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now move to any board member comments that anybody has before we get started.
I have one. I'd just like to congratulate Jane Fusco, who was a Gene Kelly nominee for Best Supporting Actress from the play.
Great, yes.
I saw the play. She did a wonderful job and very well deserved, so.
Thank you for that, yes. Thank you for bringing that up.
Hi, Juan Alson.
I just wanted to thank all the residents who've taken the time to email the board this week and express their questions, comments, and concerns.
Great, yes. Thank you for that. Dee?
I just wanted to say thank you to the residents, too. I read them all, and I've taken into consideration everything you said. The other thing I'd like to mention is last night, the teachers' union had a little affair for our students, and it was absolutely wonderful. We have the best teachers and the greatest kids, that's all I got to say. And one little thing, on May twenty-second, we have a program going on. It's called Rock the Hilltop, and it's in a senior high, and it is a class of all guitars, and it is absolutely fantastic. So if you don't have anything to do that night, at seven o'clock, go to the hilltop because it's a lot of fun.
Thank you. Thank you, Dee. Thank you for your comments. Okay, we are now going to move on, as you're all aware. We have a presentation this evening and discussions with regards to the voting on the school police force, and we have several people here that will make presentations, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Manarino, and we could take it from there.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Officer John Brunner. He's a school police officer at Keystone Oaks School District. Officer Brunner's going to do a presentation about school police officers, what their role is, what their responsibilities are. Hopefully, this can answer some questions that we had heard at our last meeting. He was sent to us by Mr. Aaron Bonnata, who is the regional director of school resource officers that I believe Officer Brunner is a part of. So this is a person that has been doing the job for quite some time, and I thought it would be great if we could hear from a school police officer what their roles are and what their responsibilities are in the district. So I'd just like to turn it over to Officer Brunner.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and to the board, and to everyone. My name is John Brunner, and I'm a school police officer for the Keystone Oaks School District, and I was simply asked to come here today to paint a picture of what I do every day. I've been, I'm now in my fourth year as a school police officer. Before that, I worked twenty years for South Strabane Township Municipal Police Department in Washington County, and before that, I worked for the District Attorney's Office in Green County as a chief county detective. So this slide here, this presentation, is, again, I'm going to hope to give you an idea in twenty minutes what I've been doing the last four years. And so as we start, working hard or hardly working, that's what I do for four years, building rapport with kids, and it's very diversified and vast on all the different activities that we do. And this is something that's not, the philosophy of it is such that the intent is for community policing. It's a philosophy based on relationships between the citizens and the police department and to solve them problems. Officers are able to see it from all sides and bring their expertise to work, to work proactively, to create a safer environment. School resource officers, what I do, that started in nineteen fifty-three, so it's not a new concept or philosophy. And in sixty, nineteen sixty-eight, the Fresno Police Department looked to school resource officers as a tool to revitalize the image in the eyes of the youth. When I eat lunch with kindergarten kids, which is what I did yesterday, I want to build a rapport. I want them to feel happy. I want them to be able to form a relationship that they feel comfortable talking with me. One high school alone saw sixty-three percent decline in arrests when they shifted their focus to this type of philosophy. That happens to be a Quaker Valley police car right there. The gentleman who should have been speaking today that I've replaced, those are some of his kids. Again, you're trying to have some fun, trying to establish rapport and relationships. The specific goals is to provide that safe environment, to bridge the gap between police and youth. As you can see in the picture, there's interactions, having fun, increase positive attitude towards law enforcement, reducing crime through educating these kids, act as a positive role model, and of course, preparedness and awareness. Because as we're having fun, we also know that the main, main, main purpose for us is to be vigilant, be alert, and to recognize and confront any threat, any violent threat that might come into your schools and be violent towards your children. So here's some other school police officers in schools, as you can see. There's triad, there's three things that we try to accomplish. Number one is counseling and mentoring. The second part of it is education, and then that third part is law enforcement, handling any threat that you see, working with the outside police departments. That's called interoperability, and being able to transmit knowledge and work back and forth. In terms of counseling and mentoring, this is where, this is where you build that relationship. You establish that rapport. I want them to feel comfortable coming to me, and they have. In my four years, I've had students come to me and say, "I'm really having a bad day. I hate these two people because of X, Y, Z, and I think I'm going to hurt them." I've also had students come to me and say, "Hey, just let you know, I overheard Billy say that he was going to go get Rick." So there's different ways building that rapport. That's the goal in terms of mentoring, mentorship, is building rapport so that they feel comfortable coming to us to report anything that could eventually turn into a violent episode. Here's some of our programs. That's me in the top left. We develop the preschool patrollers, so we have little four-year-olds, dress up in police uniforms. In the middle, I have what's called a peer jury, which is a court diversion program established by our General Assembly that allows us to take minor offenses, e-cigarettes. And the high school juniors and seniors in that middle picture, they actually are sworn in by our magistrate judge, and they listen, and then they offer a disposition, just like a judge would say guilty or innocent. And then they have them do different programs, mentorship, maybe some tutoring, to help them to stop with the bad behavior and promote good behavior. It's really effective for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders because they look up to those seniors, and they kind of look up to them, and they have a different relationship than if they're talking to me or a principal. Bottom right, that's me as an assistant soccer coach. And in the middle, playing guitar, that's me doing the National Anthem with our junior Marines. And so, and we work well with the SAD as well. Again, we're always constantly busy, eating lunch with kids, building rapport. I've been there four years. I've never just gone to work, sat there, looked at my wristwatch. There's always things taking place. Education side is where I go in and teach them, whether it's a kindergarten kid teaching them about looking both ways, to the opiates, 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 that's huge right now. That's a picture of me with some kids at Myrtle, some fourth graders there, and we're teaching them. I used to be a detective, so I would teach them how to lift fingerprints, just like a detective going there and lifting fingerprints. The philosophy is, the little things in life can be something big. So a little fingerprint can land you in jail. Being nice to somebody, listening to the teachers can be something big. So there's always a hidden agenda or a hidden message. We do Bill of Rights. We do distracted driving. There's a lot of internet, digital citizenship, drug and alcohol. There's just so many programs. Bullying is a huge thing, promoting kindness, making sure that we're on top of any type of bullying issue, internet safety, and school safety issues. This is a program that we had, just another one where we, we had a driving competition with AAA, and the student to the side, to my right, Stefan won a thousand-dollar scholarship and went to Harrisburg and was real close to getting a five or ten thousand-dollar scholarship. But again, programs, vehicular education, and the list is endless. Some more programs. In the, in the top right, we have this gentleman. He's one of the nation's leading expert and great speaker. In fact, he happens to be joining us today, Agent Phil Little. He comes to our school, so we always work with different departments to try to get, to try to get different speakers to give the different messages to the kids. He comes in, talks about opiates as well, talks about digital citizenship, because there is concerns with our phones, our iPads, and with the content and online bullying and a lot of the images and appropriateness. So we try to, try to do those as well. Took our SAD members, the Attorney General, talking to them about making destructive decisions. We have driver simulators. We had tractor trailers. We want the kids to be inside a tractor trailer. We want them to experience a blind spot, so that when they're on the interstate, they can actually understand why you shouldn't be right behind a tractor trailer, or why you should have distance. Again, education, education, education. And we are with Marty Griffin up in the top, talking about opiates and, let's see here, and there's so more. And I could probably talk for about, you know, four hours about this, but education. Down the bottom right, we have our mock DUI crash that we set up with our local police. And I think that's a good segue for me. We have four departments that I work with, Green Tree, Castle Shannon, Dormont, and Mount Lebanon. And that interoperability is huge, working with them every day, establishing a relationship, having them come in the building for building familiarization, and working as a team. Law enforcement officer, deterrent to crime, providing safety, investigating criminal activities. As a police officer in a school, I understand that the principal runs that particular building. The administration runs the district, but in that particular school is that principal. So as a police officer, I have to stay back and I have to be a bit cautious. So if a teacher comes up to me and says, "Hey, little Billy doesn't have his hall pass," that is more of a school code of conduct. I'd have to tell the teacher, "You need to report that to the principal." Because a lot of, you don't want the police department to take over a building. You want them to sit back and understand their role. Our role is to only get involved if there's called, what's called probable cause. So if a teacher says to a principal, "Hey, I think that Billy here has a beer in his backpack," and if they tell the police officer, "I just can't go searching things. I don't have that right to search that young man's backpack or his locker," because I don't have what's called probable cause. Now, if the principal has a suspicion, and if he opens the locker, and if he finds the beer can, then you have tangible evidence, then they would contact the police department. If I'm not there, they would contact Mount Lebanon. If I'm there, then they contact me. So I have to always remind myself, and it's really, it should be an important thing for you guys to know, that, and it's not our policy at Keystone Oaks, that's through the Department of Education, and that it is, you don't want police in your building taking over, searching, handcuffing kids, because then the culture and the dynamics of that building and that school is going to change. A clear and concise memorandum of understanding, that would be from the law enforcement agency that places an officer. So I'm hired by Keystone Oaks, so I'm a staff member there. I'm a police officer under the umbrella of the Department of Education. Now, Mount Lebanon is where our school's located. If they had, if they chose to go in a different direction and have Mount Lebanon, then he would be an employee of Mount Lebanon Police Department. He would be assigned to come to our building. And so that would be called a school, or resource officer. And at that point, you would have, the school district have a memorandum of understanding with that, with that police force, so that they all know what the rules are. It's a legal document, if you will. Clarifying terms and conditions. SROs were carefully, to be carefully selected law enforcement officers who have received training. Clearly define the roles of what we do, law enforcement officer, the teacher, the informal counselor. We also get other, other type of training as well. This is huge. Like, in this particular incident, it's, I want the police, I'm sorry, I want the principal and the administration staff to address a student. We only should be needed if it's a situation where a kid is totally out of control, because there are support staff in each school, there are principals in each school that can handle these types of incidents. But if they need assistance and they request us, that's when we go in. So a lot of times, people think that if, that if, you know, there's kids with diagnosis. So if there's a child with autism, you don't want a police officer in there being rough. That requires specialized training to understand that there are special needs that need to be respected. That only comes from training, having specialized training in those areas. Okay, I kind of got ahead of myself. I get specialized treatment regarding special needs children, the use of physical restraints. I've been there four years. I've, I've only handcuffed one student, and that was because a police department said that, that a judge had a warrant for a student's arrest. So another police agency said, "When he gets off the bus, the judge has required..." When a judge gives me a court order to arrest someone, I must do it. That's like him saying, "You must do it." So in four years, I've only put handcuffs on one student, and it was to serve a warrant for another police agency as per a judge's order. The use of physical restraint devices is rarely necessary. And cultural diversity, I know on my soccer team alone, I have students from Iraq, Nepal, and there's just a lot of diversity, and you have to be very open-minded and respectful. And autism, there's a lot of dynamics that you need to be educated on to fit this role. Emergency preparedness, implementing effective proactive school safety measures, identify school threats. So part of my job is to work with our building and grounds and through SEP TED, which is Threat Assessment, looking at ways to make our buildings intruder-proof. I give recommendations. My job, my, part of my contract is to give recommendations. So during executive council or administrative meetings, after I do a project, I'll make my recommendations to the superintendent, and they'll make the decision. If they want to, if they want to carry on with that, they will. If they don't, they won't. One of the things is longevity, and the belief is with our philosophy at Keystone Oaks is, the longer I'm there, the better it's going to be as I gain positive rapport with the students. So longevity is huge versus a turnover every year with this position, because, and there's a lot of words there, but, but basically, the top part of that is building that rapport. Longevity depends on proper supervision and an evaluation process involving the school officials and law enforcement, applicable, so that their input on hiring is paramount. There's uniforms here, like I wear, I wear bulletproof vest, because if I'm in a building and a violent intruder were to come in, I have a firearm. My goal, when a violent intruder goes into a school, is to distract that person immediately. Typically, it's going to take, if there's nobody in that building, if there's no law enforcement in a school building, and a violent intruder were to come in, by the time somebody finally is able to call 911, by the time 911 gets the call and processes it, by the time they tell the police officers, by the time they drive there, you're looking at about four minutes. Now the police have to get inside the building. Well, if it's under lockdown, they may not be able to get into the building, so time's ticking. By the time they get in, eighty-five percent of all active shooters die by either taking their own life or by police force. So you're looking at five, six, maybe seven minutes. If I'm already in the building, then what I can do is, I can find that person, and I can engage him. And engage in him, my goal is to have him distracted, so he's not getting target acquisition on the children. I want him shooting at me. And I have to then deploy what's called the use of force continuum, which is standard with school police officers, municipal police officers, state police. It's not like police in terms of lethal force are able to do more or less, but I want him engaging on me. I then have a radio here where I can push this button and talk directly to the police departments that are driving around. I don't even have to go through 911. So if they're, so if I immediately, if there's a shooting going on, I can immediately get onto my radio and say, "Hey, we're at ABC Elementary School, we're in Green Tree, and we're now, I'm downstairs near the, near the kindergarten floor." Those police officers are going to know exactly where to go. So instead of four and a half, five, six minutes, now it's down to fifteen, twenty seconds where I'm engaging on that violent intruder. Those minutes are precious. We believe that those minutes are precious, and having that, having that tool in each building ultimately will reduce overall injury and death to those students. There's a picture there of a guard caught sleeping. That's not what we do. I don't sit and spend my time throughout the whole day. It's, we're just very active, doing a lot. We're doing a lot of, again, I played a little bit of Monopoly today. I go in, I have found that I've, in the last four years, I've become a musician, and when I talk to kindergarten kids, and I say, "Hey, we want kindness to appear here," and you find yourself, you find yourself being a magician sometimes, okay? And the kindergarten kids love it, and if there's any bullying, well, I tell you, that bullying better disappear. So you're building that rapport, and you're trying to find ways to interact with those So I know I went through a lot there, and I apologize if it was a bit confusion, but the bottom line is, is that I have to exercise patience. I deal with parents every day that may not agree with a principal's decision to discipline a kid because he started a fight, and so there's a lot of de-escalation. Typically, when a parent comes to a building during the day, they're there because of an issue that they may not agree on. So my concern isn't always the, my concern is anyone coming into that building that may be a bit elevated, a bit agitated, because sometimes, when a person becomes agitated, they can become into an irrational state of mind, and sometimes violence can be likely. Does anyone have any questions?
Perhaps when the presentations are all done, we may, but I don't know if anybody has any.
I have one question.
Okay.
In regard to your mentoring of the students and meeting with them, do you receive special training from that and from whom?
Well, the membership falls under NASRO. NASRO is the National Association of School Resource Officers, and we have a national training that we go to every summer, and what it does is it breaks down, it's a whole week, and it breaks down into smaller little, little trainings as well. Everything from promoting being a coach, okay? Every, different ways to interact. We listen to success stories from other people, okay? And a lot of times, you learn from what has worked in other places. But a lot of times, a lot of people think, "Well, you're getting too close," like your soccer players. I've had to issue citation to some of my soccer players, but I was firm with them in that, "Look, if you cross this line and you come to an event where you have alcohol, you're going to be facing this." Because if I don't cite you, the other students will be like, "Wait a minute, he didn't cite one of his soccer players." So you have to be very fair and very, and very, it's just a fair thing to do.
Now, I believe we have probably the finest group of principals and counselors in the area, and I wouldn't want them to be seen left out of making any decision when it comes to the police officers coming in and going in with the children and teaching them. I would want to see that you're all on the same page, and you're not overriding them in any way.
That, that's true. In fact, last week, Monday through Thursday, we worked and did a present, we did multiple presentations to our middle school kids, and it was involving two of our counselors or one school therapist, a health teacher, and the principal. When we do discipline a kid, when I file citation, the goal isn't just to give that kid a three-hundred-dollar fine, which typically, if it's an eighth grader, the parent's going to pay for that. We are fortunate that we have a magistrate judge that we work with, that when we get together, in fact, this morning, we had court. The principal's there, our director of student services, school therapist, myself, the principal, if I didn't say that, and we look at everything. If that kid's, we look at his grades. We look to see if his grades were doing good, but then all of a sudden dropped. Why is it that a kid is all the way going to eighth grade, and this last semester, he's now getting all Ds? There may be something bigger. So the whole goal, then what happens is we have a review hearing, and the magistrate will say, "You know what? The grades are an issue. You're going to meet with the counseling. Let's say that you have to bring your science grade up. We want you tutoring. We want you to come back in six months and reevaluate it." It then, and the magistrate will tell the young man or young lady, "If you improve in these areas, we'll get rid of the citation." So it promotes positive behavior, and it also promotes stopping the bad behavior.
Okay, thank you. I had concerns in that area.
Yeah. I think, just to follow up on that, the principal is still in charge of the building. That hasn't changed and won't change.
Yes.
Correct. I understand that, but when they're going in with our students and teaching them, I want to be sure that they have...
That would be with the approval of the principal.
Be the approval of the principal.
Yeah, and what I, when I do a program, ma'am, I, I'm part of what's called executive council administrative meeting, so anything that I do, I have the, I have to get approval through our superintendent, and a lot of times, I'll run it past, because I know my five principals, so a lot of times, I'll talk to them and say, "Hey, what do you think? This is what I'm thinking of." And if they're okay with it, then I go to the superintendent and say, "Hey, here's our thoughts. Are you okay with this?" And I'm not going to ever do anything that the superintendent or the principal doesn't feel comfortable with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer Brunner.
Thank you, Officer.
Next, we will have the two police chiefs, one from Ross Township and one from Westview. Chief Romulak and Chief Lay both get up there, and you could both get up. Chief Lay, you could have the mic, too, if you...
I'm going to go off, but I just...
Okay. If this is regards to the parking ticket, my check is in the mail, okay?
Well, good evening, everyone. I was asked to come up here to just give an opinion from our perspective, at least from Westview boroughs. I believe Chief Lay, through our conversations that we've had recently, will agree, if he'll get his turn, too, I guess. I think what the school board is looking for is one of the most proactive programs that, it's unfortunate in this, in today's society, and the things that are going on every day, they're taking the progressive step forward and not waiting for something to happen, but preparing themselves if something should happen. Been a police officer for thirty-three years. Ten of those years, I was a DARE officer, Drug Abuse Resistance Education. Was at Westview Elementary from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety, well, two thousand. Also seen that fanatious. There is no explanation. Has anyone in here had DARE? Have you been a student of DARE? Okay. Did you believe that you built a rapport with the officer, or the officer was the, one of the things I hate hearing is, "We're near a restaurant in uniform, and some child is crying. If you don't stop crying, see that policeman over there? He's going to arrest you."
Oh, yeah.
It's the worst thing you could ever say to someone, because honestly, from what you see or hear or read about, we're good guys. The reason we all took a job, the very first question you ask, "Why'd you want to be a police officer, Chief Lay?" Want to help people. That's just kind of built into our dynamics. Whatever reason, we want to help people. So when you're, when you're instituting a program that enables an officer, a uniform officer to go into the schools, and not just the high school and junior high school, I think, I believe the elementary schools are just as important, because you're, you're building that rapport with not only the students, the parents, the officer that just spoke, is he still here? Did he leave? The officer that just spoke. He hit, hit all the high points, because he's speaking true in reality, speaking from the heart of what his experiences are. I was playing kickball in the gymnasium with four of my officers on Wednesday in the Biggs and Blue program. I'm dressed exactly like this, with the shiny shoes on, which the kids love, I don't know why. We're running around in the... We're running around in, in, in the gymnasium and just really, these are third graders. And then as we're in that gymnasium, running around playing kickball, 57-year-old guy, I don't know why I'm in a gymnasium playing kickball, but I think it's the right thing to do, to try to build that rapport with the residents, with the, with the administration. And as we're doing that, other children of other grades are coming through the gym to go out to recess, and we're high-fiving everyone. Everybody's high-fiving, they love to, you know, shake your hand, how you doing? How are you? And then at the end of that, I told my guys, go wash your hands, because I can't have, can't have everybody off with pink eye next week. You know? So I don't want to, I don't want to take a lot of time here. All I'm saying is, from the Westview Police Department's point of view, 33 years as a police officer, 33 years in the United States Air Force, Air National Guard, been to a lot of countries, dealt with a lot of diplomacy, been involved with a lot of different programs. This is a great thing, and I'm not looking for a job. I'm not looking for that retirement job, trust me. I'm busy enough as it is within Westview. But I'm here to support the program, and I'll be over here, I guess, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Lay?
Had to bring my water in case I'm losing my voice here because of allergy season, but bear with me. Just wanted, before I get into it real quick, I wanted to touch on Officer Brunner's comment about the magistrate and his jurisdiction. We have the same similar situation here with Judge Opial. I'm sure many of you know him, hopefully for, for good reasons. But yeah, he, same, same type of work with us. He's got the same goal as us, is to, to build these kids into be productive, you know, law-abiding adults more, more so. And I also wanted to, you know, take the time to commend Dr. Manarino and the board for actually bringing in Officer Brunner, because he gave you the first perspective here that we, we don't have. This is a new endeavor for us. We're fully committed to supporting the school district and whatever they decide. We've met myself and Chief Romek several times with Dr. Manarino. I think this is an excellent step. It's just like one more of my officers now, it's in the school full-time. Currently, right now, you know, our guys are out on patrol, they'll stop at the school, take a walk through, you know, say hi to the kids, and teachers love it, the kids love it, but now we're going to be able to do that on a full-time basis. So I think it's a good proactive, proactive step moving forward. One other thing he touched on too, when he talked about, sometimes it takes, you know, on the average, it'll take five, six, seven minutes to get an officer to respond. If I sat here, and we sat here in complete silence for five minutes, you would think that was an eternity. Now with that officer there, we're talking seconds. So that's a big difference too. And just one of the other things I mentioned earlier in, in another meeting is, I look at this as probably like a 98% goodwill ambassadorship for the kids, and a 2% where that officer's going to be needed for something serious, and we're going to be glad that he was there for that 2%. But 98% of the time, this is going to be high-fiving the kids, talking to the kids, building a rapport from those kids from when they're in kindergarten going all the way through here. So again, I pledge a Dr. Manarino and the school board too. Moving forward, if you take this direction, you have the complete support of Ross Township Police. I know you got the complete support of Westview Police. We're looking forward to working with you, training with your officers. Again, the key to remember is, these are going to be police officers, trained certified police officers in the state of Pennsylvania. So I think it's a necessary step, and it's going to, it makes me feel at ease too, moving forward. You're going to, you've got smart people here, you're going to have the, you're going to have the right people hired, and it's going to be committed to make this a success. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Lay. I just want to add, before we have the NHA come up, just for the public consumption, we have spent a tremendous amount of time with both, both police forces, specifically both chiefs, talking about this idea for quite some time, getting information, getting data, getting ideas, how we handle, so that we've, we've kind of reached that point after hours and hours of discussions with the, with both police departments and gathering the data and coming to this, to the point we are today. So I just would like everybody to know that it wasn't something that we just pretty much decided on our own without going out and doing the research. As I mentioned in the last meeting too, involved in this discussion prior to this, not only were the local police, but we also spent some time and extensive hours with the FBI talking about these kinds of situations. So I think that's important to note. That being said, we are going to have comments now from our North Hills Education Association. So whoever wants the mic.
My name is Matt Demharder. I'm the president of the North Hills Education Association. Over the past several years, school safety and security have been a topic that has been discussed in various forms on a somewhat regular basis within our association. Unfortunately, going back to February, the Parkland shooting in Florida seemed to be the tipping point. Since then, I have had a lot of concerns, emails, questions, phone calls, and face-to-face conversations with staff about their feelings of school safety. I can say to echo your comments, Mr. Wilgus, that the district from my seat has put a ton of time and effort into this since February, involving the principals, NHA leadership, and I know that this has been a body of work that's taken a lot of time. Including the beginning of the next school year, I know there's two or three days of professional development opportunities, active school trainings, things of that nature that have been discussed, basically with the culmination of tonight's discussion of the proposed police force. That being said, earlier this week, Dr. Manarino asked me what the membership would think about having armed police officers patrolling our buildings. We had an election earlier this week for some internal business, and the exec board and I decided to attach a referendum to our ballots, that way we could get a good feel from the entire membership. The question basically asked if members would be for or against the proposed armed police officers in our buildings. The results were over 92% in favor of them, and that is a clear indication of where our membership stands on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you for your.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Demharder?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Next, we will have some comments from our building leaders, or leader, or whoever.
Jesse.
Jesse? Okay. You got the short straw.
Yes. Hi, I'm Jesse Simpson. I'm the principal at Westview Elementary School. I just wanted to take a moment to let you know that both the secondary and elementary principals are unanimously, unanimously in support of the proposal to actively address the issue of student safety. While it makes us all sad to think that these are conversations we even need to have in schools, we are nonetheless deeply committed to the safety of our students. At the same time, we want to reassure families that the principals' roles and responsibilities will not change as the academic, social, and behavioral needs and well-being of our students. We will continue to be the leaders of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you so much. Again, once again, I do appreciate those of you that spoke this evening and to give us your perspective and thoughts, and we really do. On behalf of the board and the district, we certainly appreciate it. We can now move on to public comments on the agenda items only, and I see that there are probably seven or eight or nine people that signed up. So what we're going to do is, I'm going to have Mrs. Bender read the, our statement with regards to public comments, but I will say, if you would be kind enough, if you could hold your comments to approximately three minutes to give everybody else a chance to have their say, as well as that you keep your comments to the subject as, and if there, if there are things that people have said that you're going to repeat, perhaps maybe you could just suggest that you agree or disagree with the people that spoke prior to that. So that being said, I'll have Mrs. Bender read our statement, and then we'll start calling people to the microphone.
We would like to invite any resident, taxpayer, or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. It is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation inasmuch as it provides the board with an important source of ideas, as well as informs us of many concerns in the district. The board does reserve the right, however, to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speaker and/or issue. In the interest of preserving an orderly and effective public meeting, personnel items must be submitted in writing to the board president for consideration five days prior to the board meeting. Some of your concerns can be immediately and quickly addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussion. When appropriate, you are welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting. We appreciate your interest.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bender. One other point I want to make is, was you get up to the microphone, if you would state your name and address for the record, and we will start with Sarah. Is Sarah here? Is it, is it Schleper?
Schleper.
Schleper, I'm sorry, I didn't want to, didn't want to mispronounce.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
My name's Sarah Schleper. My address is 738 Perry Highway, Ross Township 1529. I have a daughter who's currently a junior at North Hills. I'm a licensed clinical social worker in the state of Pennsylvania. I work in an educational setting. I follow the school shooter phenomenon with great interest. I'm greatly concerned and stunned about the decision to put armed, underline armed, school officers in North Hills buildings. My understanding of equality education is the ability to teach and model the concept of responsible decision-making based on facts and research. The limited amount of information about the administrative decision to recommend this that I've been able to review does not seem to take either of those concepts into consideration. The limited amount of research into keeping violence out of schools shows that having armed police in schools did not deter or affect mass shootings. It may cut down on the time, but there's no evidence to show that it's prevented anything. Parkland had an armed security person, and as we all know, many were died and injured. That tragically demonstrated that having armed security does not equal loss of life or safer schools. Research shows that most school violence is not from mass shootings and random victims, they're usually single incidents between two people. The chance of a student adult being killed at school is approximately one in 1 million. I don't negate the school tragedies at all. We have a gun concern in this country, but why would North Hills put all this money and time into an unsafe option to prepare for the least possible attack? Why wouldn't North Hills look at research-driven options that don't involve guns in our schools? Does North Hills have any safety data that shows any trends towards school violence in this district? Associated Press and CBS has reported research that since 2014, there have been 30 publicly reported mishaps involving firearms brought into schools by security. School psychologists and mental health professionals stress that a child can't learn in an environment where there are perceived threats or feel unsafe. Once again, it's not the policeman, it's the gun. I do respect police, and have had generally positive interactions with them. However, they are who they are. They are police. They can't be seen as anything else. I have to wonder what it would be like for some of our minority students, or students who may have had various experience with the police, and how this may impact their experience with a safe school. There are other ways to have police presence around our schools. I also wonder if any middle or high school students were involved with this plan, if there was any discussion with them. If so, how? If not, why not? They know their needs, they know what makes them feel safe. You can't have a healthy and nurturing school environment with guns. Firepower does not equal safety. North Hills has a mandate to create a safe, creative, and positive learning environment for all students. Why would we spend money on something that has a remote possibility, when we could spend this money on things and resources that would actually help prevent violence and nurture life and problem-solving skills for all students? Everything from looking at the environment, which I'm taking it you're going to do, and we know that one of the biggest proven violence prevention interventions is being proactive. Do we have enough trained and available mental health resources that school professionals can easily access and refer to? Do we reach students who might do harm to others early on before things have a chance to foster? And do we follow up with those students and their families continuously over time? Do we get them the help that they need, whether it's in this educational setting or not? Do we educate students to take responsibility for their part in maintaining safe schools? Do we have curriculums and staff that can teach alternatives to violence, such as conflict resolution skills and positive interpersonal skills? What about the life skills of managing anger, depression, stress, or other emotions? These are all things this money could go into. How do we keep a feeler on the pulse of those students who may be prone to violence or have fascination with guns? Do we work with their families and monitor their situations over time? I could go on. I always felt my daughters received equality education at North Hills. I've always appreciated the culture in our schools until this incident, because it proved to be positive, level-headed, and respectful. The extreme reactivity of this administration and school board has changed that. The dangers of having any guns in schools, even with trained officers, granted, eight hours of gun training, in my opinion, isn't enough, but I know they're professional, I know their hearts are in the right place. But with the buildings being crowded, the risk, students who may not understand the things that are drilled or taught because of their special needs, those are concerns. Tax dollars should be used for academics, art, and teaching critical thinking and problem-solving skills, and real-life skills, not providing an illusion that a school is safer by having armed security officers. I vote, and I never would have voted for anyone on this board if I even thought this would have been a remote possibility. Please, don't ask me to look for alternatives for my daughter next year when we're looking at colleges, because North Hills skills will no longer be safer for her. Thank you very much for your attention in this matter.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for your comments. Next, Matt Ferry?
Hi, I'm Matt Ferry, 309 Highland Pines Drive in Ross Township. And I want to second the call for a evidence-based approach to decision-making here that the last speaker made. And I won't repeat what she said, except maybe throw out a citation there when she said that there are few studies that give any indication of the efficacy of police in schools on violence. And the few that do show no statistically significant correlation between that presence and reduction of violence, one of them is Nathan James and Gail McCallion writing for the Congressional Research Service, which is part of the Library of Congress, 2013, school resource officers, law enforcement officers in schools. So the good news is, is that there is evidence-based conclusions finding that there are things that work in schools. One of those things is a list of factors that the CDC published, gathered from multiple sources, that found that there are social and interpersonal and school-based factors that are things that school districts can move the needle on that make a difference. And these are probably things that we're already good at, but since we're talking about going from a very safe school to a much safer school, we're going to have to get better at things that we're already good at, I believe. So they list 23, I'm going to list four to give you an idea of them. Positive social orientation, highly-developed skills for realistic planning, connectedness to adults outside the family, exposure to school climates characterized by intensive supervision, clear behavioral rules, consistent negative reinforcement of aggression, and engagement of teachers. So the great thing to me about this is that we're talking about addressing a problem not by arming people with a gun, but rather by arming students with the internal resources that they would need to create for themselves an environment that is free of violence. So that is what I would like to see. Now, I want to add one more thing. I'm afraid that the board has been a victim, shall we say, of confirmation bias in their process so far. It sounds to me like a couple of years ago, you went out and said, a lot of scary things are happening, maybe we should have police in our schools. You went and spent a lot of time with police, asking if that was the right thing to do. They said yes, so you're going ahead with this process. And I think the police have important input on this issue, but they are one of many, many sets of experts that we should be consulting and considering these things. So I think that in order to walk back the confirmation bias a little bit, we need to inject the conversation with more data, scholarly literature, and to do that will take time. So for today's purposes, I urge you to lay this motion on the table for a few months to give yourself a chance to step back, review the evidence, and make a dispassionate decision about which way to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next, we could ask Samantha, is it Murphy?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Samantha Murphy. I'm from 209 Twin Oaks Drive in Ross. I have a third grader at Ross and a seventh grader in the building here at the middle school. I am not anti-police, I am not anti-gun, I am not anti-collaboration. My concern is that it felt to me the quickness of the decision that was happening, and what we haven't considered yet is the, well, since it's prepared as the other speakers, is the, the concern about the residual effects of peers being arrested, anxiety around the students, the increase of criminality of our kiddos. The evidence shows that a fast track to arrest is when criminal justice is closer to our students. And so I don't think that's an effect that we want to increase here in the North Hills. And I appreciate the. Hills, and I appreciate the sentiment to slow down, and I love the confirmation bias comment, I echo that and clap. I thank you for hearing me, and considering my comments, I did email a letter with concern, and I'm happy to be a part of a further conversation if that's a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Next, Ashley, is it Borno?
My name's Ashley Borno, I'm from 171 Highland Avenue in Westview, 15229. I'm actually a North Hills graduate myself, class of 2003, and I have four children, three at Westview Elementary School, and my daughter's up here at the middle school. I'm here today to express my extreme gratitude and awesome feeling I have inside that North Hills is going forward with putting armed security in our schools. I truly believe, I know there is a million evidence to counteract and support, I truly believe that it is going to help the children feel safer. After numerous conversations with my own children that I've had, I asked them, "Are you going to be scared if you see a police officer, full uniform, with a gun in your school?" All the answers were, "No, I don't do anything wrong, I have nothing to worry about." My one son is in third grade at Westview, and he does the Big Brother, Big Sister program with Westview Police Officers, playing kickball. He told me all about it. Let me tell you, that program is amazing, I'd like to see more programs, like the first officer, I can't remember his name, sorry, said to bring more programs in. My son has missed less school, as you know, Mr. Simpson, he has his brain, his outlook on life, he is a lot happier kid. He gets in less trouble, and he was my troublemaker. I just agree with everything that you guys are saying. Do your research, everybody do their research, everybody's going to have a separate opinion. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, you are awesome, you're going to not just quickly decide on a factor without considering everything else that goes along with it, that's why you're in the seats that you are. And also, like, especially with bullying and everything like that, those programs the officer was talking about, that reminds me of what my third grader talks to his police officer about, and has that repertoire with him that will help him through life. You said, "Who was in there?" I was in there, Officer Much, he sends me a Christmas card every year. Love him, and I'm thirty-three years old. I just think it is a positive reinforcement, and I'm very thankful that I still have my children going to North Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ashley. Elizabeth? Is it Hogan, last name?
Ed, if you hadn't pulled the mic down and speak into the mic.
Is this good?
There you go.
All right. Elizabeth Pagel Hogan, 141 Tyler Road. I have three children in the school district, I have a fifth grader, second grader, and a seventh grader. So, I am grateful to the board, because I know that this is a difficult, complex issue. And I do know that we're all working towards the same goal of safety. I've been working on ways to reduce gun violence for five years, not just since February. I was in a classroom when Sandy Hook happened at a North Hills school, and I know that this is something that we're all really worried about. But it's a complex problem, and it doesn't have one single solution. So, starting from that shared goal, I'd like to encourage the district to act on many different ways instead of just one. I have heard over and over that you're looking for these officers to offer mentoring and counseling, but let's hire the right people for the right job. Let's allot the same amount of money in the budget for mentors and counselors who know how to do that kind of very specialized work for children. I know that our administration went to school for years to learn about the best way to lead a school district full of children. So, let's hire those people who've put in the same amount of time and effort and care about children the way that you do. The district offers lots of community education, including on issues like opiates, digital safety. I would love for this school district to acknowledge the connection between domestic violence and mass shootings, and begin talking about that with our students at every age, from elementary to high school. I'm a little emotional, because when my kindergartner invited me into his classroom for Mother's Day, which is this Sunday, a kindergarten girl said to me, "My dad's not home because he hit my mom and called her a bad name." And my kindergartner turned to me with eyes wide and stunned, and I reported it to the teacher, but I've not yet once heard our school district offer any resources, community education programs for parents or students on domestic violence. I haven't yet heard it named as a specific topic that increases the threat of danger to students and our school community, including teachers. Our school also does a great job with educating parents about keeping their kids safe online, but there are programs like Be Smart, which is supported by the Ross Township Police, that teaches parents how to ask about guns in the homes where their children visit and where their children play. It teaches parents how to avoid unintentional shootings as a result of improperly stored firearms. It discusses the risks of teen suicide in a home where there are improperly stored firearms. People have a right to defend their homes, but we also need to do everything we can to reduce the risk of children accessing these weapons, including elementary school children bringing them to school without knowing the possible consequences, or teenagers bringing them to school with the intent of causing harm to others. This is not an easy topic, there isn't one easy answer, but I know we all care enough to work for safety in our school community, so let's be brave enough to do the really hard work that will make a difference.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next, Mr. Vesely.
I have to commend the speakers who came up here, who basically brought up the ideas that there is a different opinion than having guns in the school. I want to make it clear that I am not for guns in the school, loaded guns just mean loaded problems. Sarah, excellent, excellent points, Matt, same thing. I still don't see the board, and even with our presentation from the Keystone Oaks officer, they really didn't address, how did Keystone Oaks reach that decision? You've expressed that the board has met with the police officers of Ross and Westview, and with the FBI, but have you met with these other people? Have you really taken this into consideration? Or you just, hey, this is a solution, we're going to grasp it, and we're going to run with it? I really am asking you to, exactly what I wrote you a week ago, it's time to table this, it's time not to vote in favor of this, more resource needs to be done, more public interaction, more chances for the public to comment. This forum of addressing the board and the school district is not really set up for interaction. We have a chance to comment, you guys will then have a discussion, but there's no interaction. I, as I said in my email to the board, I really think we should have a public meeting, several public meetings. We do it when we redistrict, but we're not doing it now, and I just don't understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Vesely. Cal, is it Ann Mary Bender? Cal here? Sorry? Nope?
Hi, I'm Ann Mary Bender, 413 Blaze Drive in Glen Shaw. I have two children in the school district, one is in fourth grade and one is in eighth grade.
If you, I'm sorry, if you could just pull the mic a little bit, there you go.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
All right. One spring day in 1999, I received a frantic phone call from my sister to turn on the TV, and that she couldn't find her daughter, and this was before the 24-hour news channels. And so, I'm at work, and I run into the cafeteria, and I turn on CNN, and there with the helicopters, they're showing a picture of children running out of Littleton's High School. My niece was a senior there, and it took us seven hours to locate her. That's back before the children were even given cellphones. And the fear that went through our family, not knowing whether or not she was one of the children laying on a floor, or laying in the cafeteria. She's almost a forty-year-old woman now, and she's still suffering with night terrors and PTSD. The amount of children that year who didn't even get a GED is astounding. One of her best friends was one of the last ones to get out of that school, and they found her cowering under a dirty janitor sink. I'm not saying that putting money into programs and to find alternative ways to reach these children beforehand isn't a good idea. We are looking at this as an insurance policy, hoping that we never, ever need it. But I got to tell you, had there been a school resource officer there on the ground that day in 1999, it might have made a difference. It might have made a difference to my family personally, and it might have made a difference to all of those children, and that poor teacher who laid there and bled to death. And so, just from a personal perspective, yeah, you don't want to have to have guns in the elementary schools, but I also don't want to get the call that my sister got back then. And here we are, almost two decades later, and we are still having the same conversation. So, nothing has really moved forward. So, until we can get to a point where we're making a valued and concentrated effort on these programs, I'm completely content with putting a Band-Aid on the whole thing and having a resource officer there just to make sure that my kid comes home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann Mary. Jason Secorek, Jason?
Hi, everybody again, Jason Sacrek, 402 Bryn Court in Ross, my girls go to Ross Elementary. I want to echo a lot of the points that my fellow neighbors said today, a lot about prevention, I thought that was a great point, and I would like to see this motion just laid on the table, I think that's the right course of action at this time, so I won't reiterate all those points. I did want to bring up two other items. One, we talked about budget, and this is not about pennywise and raising taxes, but I believe the comment was last week when we spoke, it would be about a $400,000 line item to the budget, or under half a million dollars. I would seriously ask the board to relook at those numbers, because with the items we heard about tonight, communication devices, certifications, training, and that doesn't even cover the employees yet, I'd be surprised if you can get this thing done for $400,000, or more importantly, do it the right way and find the right people. So, I would debate the point that this can be done for the budget that was presented to the community last week. The last point, and, you know, I, once again, will reiterate my point, that I would love to see this program actually led by someone with security training. Once again, Dr. Manorino, your background's education, and I absolutely respect that, but I would love to see the person leading this police force have security, risk mitigation, that training to lead, to create the policies. Dr. Manorino, I'm not going to take your words out of context, and I will put them as much context as I can. Last week, there was a heated debate, and these comments came out, was, "If this motion did not pass, it would be less paperwork for you." Sir, I believe that's a very misguided comment, and there's a lot more to create an excellent police force than just paperwork, and this is not a personal attack, in no way, but I believe that was a little bit short-sighted, and, you know, I think it's a little bit too heated at this moment in the community and on the board, so why don't we take the necessary time? School will be out in 20 days, or, I don't know, probably less, but why don't we take the time we need to do this and do this right? So, thank you all for the time again. I'll give my time.
Thank you, Jason. On behalf of the board, I do want to thank all those that spoke this evening. I do appreciate the professionalism and the respect that you showed in your comments. I know this is a very highly-charged subject, for lack of a better way of putting it, but again, we appreciate the fact that you all got up and spoke your piece, said what you had to say, but with respect and professionalism, so thank you so much. That being said, I think what I'd like to do is, because we're on the subject, I think we're going to move on the agenda and come down to support services, being with this subject being under there. I know this might be catching you by surprise, Mrs. Spade, I'm sorry, but I thought maybe we can just move into your area under support services, you do have a couple of things there, and more, that involve the safety and security of the district, as well as the police officers. So, we're going to, I'm going to at least go to there and hand over the microphone to you to do the discussion on that.
Okay, I have two articles on this board, and the first one is Resolution 2018-5, Establish Armed North Hill School District Police Officers. I want that, Pat, where's this at? That's number one.
Mm-hmm.
Number, I'm doing these together, right?
You can do them together, sure.
The second one is Bit Award, Provide and Install Safety/Security Window Film.
Then we just need your motion.
Okay, I'm getting it.
Take your time.
The superintendent recommends, and I shall move, that the board approve Support Services Item 1 and 2.
And that's including the Resolution 2018-5 to authorize the superintendent to develop policies and procedures to establish and arm North Hill School District Police Officers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just want to say that I appreciate everybody speaking, and I understand all of your concerns and comments. As you guys all know, I also have two children in the school district, so this is not a decision that I take lightly, and I personally, you know, would like to say that I believe we're taking a multifaceted approach to security, this is not a Band-Aid or one thing that we're doing. And while I also appreciate that parents are stakeholders, I also, I would like to acknowledge what the NHEA said, and the fact that 92% of the teachers in this district are in favor of this, and, you know, that weighs really heavily in my decision, because it's very important to me that the teachers feel comfortable and safe in their work environment.
Thank you, Ellie. Any other comments? Mrs. Reed?
Are you doing a roll call vote?
Not necessarily, because we will decide those that vote, we can list by names, yes and no.
Okay, the only thing I don't want to go on and on, because I did last week, and notes that you were here, I gave all my concerns as to why I would vote no on this. It's not that I don't want to see our principals and our teachers protected, safety-wise, I want you to know, not only do I have two grandsons in the district, I have a daughter that's a teacher, and I don't want her shot in any way, and I want to protect them all. Personally, I don't have enough information on this, I don't have statistics. I did not, me personally, did not meet with the police officers for hundreds of hours. I was with them twice, at two different meetings for an hour each time. I know no statistics, what has been going on up here, it's very hard for me to vote tonight to just put in armed police officers in this school district that we're forming a police department. If that was worded differently, I would have no problem with it, but just giving them a blank check, I can't do it.
Could, Dr. Manorino, could I ask you to speak a little bit to the difference between the legal resolution and the policy formation?
Yeah, this is a legal resolution that we would need in the event we go down the path of establishing a North Hill School District Police Force, and the paperwork comment, sir, was that the next step is the building of job description, it is the building of processes, it is the building of procedures. If the board votes no tonight, a job description for school police is not necessary, policies and procedures about how we operate with school police is not necessary. And so, this is the first step, it is a legal document written by our solicitor, so that anytime a police officer is sworn in by the district, this legal resolution will be required to take the steps legally to make that person an officer. That's why it is step one. If the vote tonight is yes, the next phase for me, the administration and the policy committee, is to build job descriptions, policies, and procedures, all of those, we put in front of this board, in front of the public, for a vote. So, this is not a fast track, this is step one, and if step one is no, then we have three security guards, they are not armed, and we will continue with that. They are not armed, and we will continue with that. And if the answer is yes, then we will build policies, procedures, and practices to hire and equip police officers. So, that's how the steps are being taken, and that's why the resolution is written the way it is. There's a lot of legalese, because there's a lot of specific word-for-word language out of P.A. School Code of 1949.
I just, I wanted to clarify that as well. If, to the extent there are any concerns about the language, I mean, the school code is referenced in the resolution, and I have it up here, and it's, I mean, it's, that's the language that the school code requires that we adopt, if this is the next steps that we wanna take.
Thank you, Sandy. I appreciate that.
We're not looking to rush to hire. We don't rush to hire anybody in this district. We want the right people, working with our students and our teachers, and we will follow the exact same process that we follow with this.
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Bender?
I just wanted to say that I understand what this particular motion is, and I understand what we're supposed to be doing with it. In my heart, the teachers know how I feel about you. The administrators do. I don't wanna see anybody hurt, but I cannot, under any circumstance, bring my mind to say more guns in more places, held by more people, is safer. So, I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
On that one, and the second one, I'll vote yes.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't mean to make this like a political platform, but, you know, I agree with what Mrs. Bender said. I personally do not like firearms, and I will say again that I think we need more common sense gun laws. I'm not a gun lover. I agree with what Ms. Pagel-Hogan said, that, you know, we should have some more training in our schools, and I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have Mrs. Reed and Mrs. Bender, no, and I-
But only on the resolution.
Only on the resolution. So, they're voting yes on the bid award, which is item number two, but no on the resolution.
Correct, no on item one.
You got that, Lori?
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We can now move back to the agenda, and there is one item that I was going to ask. I wanted to move down to the Beatty. I know this is kinda catching you all by surprise, but I wanna move to Beatty and look at, approve the operating budget. This would be under the E.W. Beatty Center, and I'll ask Mrs. Bender, would you like to take this, Mrs. Bender?
Sure.
Okay.
I can take it. There I go.
Unless, I-
Wrong one.
Want this one?
No, I have it, thank you. Okay. The superintendent recommends, and I so move, that we adopt the 2018, 2019 operating budget for A.W. Beatty Career Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Please make sure, I don't know, Mrs. Rigor, did you get everybody's?
I think I have just about everybody's. There's one more that I need to collect.
Okay, and just make sure that Lori has it, because we need the papers and the vote. The other thing is, on May 30th, will we be together? Do we have something before May 30th? No.
No, not here. We have the Beatty JOC meeting, but not here.
Okay, on May 30th, though, is the Beatty Senior Recognition Night. They call it graduation, and because Dr. Manarino is Superintendent of Record, it will be held here. We hope to be able to use the outside, because the kids last year, we told them they were gonna use the outside. They were so excited, and then it rained, so we came inside, but if anybody would like to come, that's on Thursday, that Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Wednesday?
I mean, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah, because we're June 1st. We're Friday.
One more surprise. Does anybody have any questions on the other agenda items they would like to discuss?
I only have one.
Okay.
And this is under Finance.
Okay.
Oh, you know what, though, it's not, is an agenda item. Can I still ask a question?
Sure, sure.
Okay. It's what Dr. Knowles. We voted on the preliminary budget last week.
Right.
And prior to that, we, I went to the Budget Committee meetings, and not all of them, some of them I couldn't make, but I tried to attend all that I could, and we were told that even when, at the beginning, when we were adding eleven teachers on to the budget on that, and now with the police officers, we were told it did not affect an increase in the budget. Now, on the news this week, it was due to the fact we were increasing taxes because of hiring eleven teachers and the security, and I believe that's wrong, but I wanted, I want someone to tell me that, that knows what they're talking about, not me, just what I hear on TV and what I heard at meetings. Am I correct?
Wait, you-
What I'm asking is this: The minimal budget increase we're asking for is not due to the fact we're hiring eleven teachers and adding security.
That's part of it. That's part, I mean, that's part of the reason, that's not the reason, but that's part of it.
We were told no.
No, well, maybe you. I don't, I don't remember being told that.
Were you told no?
I have, please excuse me, because I'm struggling with the same allergies that the other gentleman was, so I can barely talk, so I'm gonna probably turn this over to Mr. Hall, but when you looked at the budget, all of those items were in there. We're putting a new roof on the senior high. We're adding eleven teachers. We're adding officers. There's a whole long list of things, and when the budget all came in, at the end of it, that was the number that we came up with, that, you know, was discussed at the budget committees.
Well, I'm sorry, then, I was under the misassumption.
So, it's been, my assumption has been that it's in there from the very beginning. Now, if this resolution had voted down, had been voted down, and it would've taken out of it, then there would've been an adjustment in the budget.
There wouldn't have been.
But it wouldn't necessarily have changed the, it wouldn't have changed the-
Correct. This budget is a minimal increase.
It would not have changed the budget.
Under Act 1.
Right.
The way they, on TV, that it was an increase, it is an increase, but it's minimal.
Right.
But regardless, if we had the eleven teachers and added the security, that number would've stayed the same, the increase. I don't want anybody to believe that voting for these two things are increasing their taxes.
Correct.
That's untrue. Misinformation. Am I correct?
Yeah, we had discussed having seven security officers. We have three security officers. I mentioned that a little bit ago. In the budget discussions, we were adding four security officers. The discussion quickly changed to adding police officers. So, that's where we are in the discussion. So, Kathy's right. In the original budgets, in January, when we began, there were seven security officers in there, and so this vote is not changing that number. The one thing that did change is we added a $200,000 contingency fund for safety and security, and it's a contingency fund, which means in order for me to spend that money, I have to have the permission of the board to spend it on safety and security items. That's an item that is added, and that's not necessarily related to this resolution either. There's a lot of, like, for example, no.
That, we would've been looking at this tax-
No, that was all in there from before. Yes.
Regardless of what we did, it's very minimal. We're going under Act 1, and they can explain it to you.
We're a growing district, and we're adding staff members at the elementary level as our, as our elementary class sizes are growing, and so we're adding elementary staff. We also decided this year that we were gonna add elementary computer science, so we're adding an elementary computer science program to this. We're also adding three special education teachers to the elementary schools. So, the district chose, in that original budget, to add staff. And in the grand scheme of things, obviously, all of that costs money, and that's where the tax increase comes in. So, there's significant added programs, an additional group of teachers because of a growing population, and we were choosing to put four security officers in one each, in each elementary school. Tonight's resolution is the discussion of going away from the job description of security officer and into school police, and following the resolution and the school code and the things that occur to establish a school police department. So, Kathy's right, that's, this is, this vote is not an impact on the budget. The impact is that we're adding staff, and we're growing, and we're doing a lot of things. So, a district that's gonna add that many staff members and raise the tax, not the Act 1 index, I think says a lot about our fiscal responsibility. And I'm also pleased that we're a district here talking about adding programs and adding staff, and we're not a district here talking about furloughing teachers and cutting programs. And for that, I'm proud to be a leader of a district that's moving forward, and being able to be proactive for our students and add staff members and add programs that we know are vitally important to their education.
Does anybody else have any, Sandy, I thought you had mentioned something about the appointment of the voting delegates for PSBA. Would you, do you need, wanna discuss?
No, no, no. I'm fine on that.
Is anybody, okay, is there any-
Lori just needs to know by June 29th, three vote, three board members who are, are gonna attend the meeting in October and would like to serve as voting delegates.
Sure, right.
So, if we could maybe have that discussion on the 31st and have that as a voting item on the 7th, so that we can then submit that to the PSBA.
We were just, I was just clarifying something.
Yep, thanks.
All the, any other questions on the agenda? The reason why I'm saying that is I was going to ask for a motion for a consent agenda this evening, assuming that everybody was okay with what's on there.
Most of it.
Mr. Moody? Mr. New, Moody? Did I say Moody?
Moody?
Moody.
I have one comment in Legislative Affairs. Last week, the Pennsylvania State House passed a bill that would require school board members to run by party. There would be no cross-filing. It was approved by the House. It has now gone over to the Senate. It will be debated in the Senate Education Committee. A suggestion to contact your senator is Randy Valakovich, and ask him to vote no on House Bill 638. I think this would remove the bipartisan aspect of school boards in the future.
That's a joke.
Thank you, Mr. New. Thanks for bringing that attention to us. If only they could move quicker on some other things that we're asking them to do, right? That would be great. Okay, so I would like to entertain a motion to do a consent agenda. Motion by Mrs. Spade.
I'll second it.
Second by Dr. Knowles. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We can now move on to the last part of the meeting, and I get my, is additional public comments, and I think there are two individuals who signed up to speak on, it appears to be the agenda items, but after the meeting. Matt, do you still wanna, if you'd like, please? Then Mr. Vesely.
Matt Ferry again. So, I wanted to address policy development around the school police force, and, let me see, I scribbled myself some stuff here. I hope that this is something that the entire board stays very closely involved in. This is a very consequential issue, a lot of important decisions to be made. I'm not sure what your usual process is. It sounds like the Policy Committee in conjunction with Administration works on policy, and that is certainly not inappropriate, that they would write the words for policy. Dr. Marino, Manarino, excuse me, obviously, it goes without saying, obviously cares very deeply about safety of our students. He's passionate about this particular solution. He's got expertise that you guys don't have. He's got staff, so it would be natural for you to involve him heavily in drafting policy. My concern, though, is that the board, again, not the committee, but the board as a whole, provide concrete and substantial input before the policy development process begins. I sat in my seat and thought up a bunch of questions that I think are very important and that I at least have not heard answered. What's the purpose of this force? I've heard a couple of different suggestions, not entirely clear to me, not the tasks, but the purpose. And given that, how would you measure success? And are there any, are there any conditions under which you would make changes to the program or to personnel? Would you be asking the court that officers have the authority to issue summary citations and to detain students, because it's my understanding that that's an option under the law, the Uniform School Code, or whatever it's called? Will they carry openly? I think Officer Bruner suggested a notion of what counselors and what delivering curriculum might look like, so that comforts me somewhat, if your vision is the same as his. What's the threshold for behavior infraction that would permit the school officer to become involved in a disciplinary process? That's a very important question, because it's been shown that when you have SROs in schools, there's an increased reliance, or there's an increased rate of referral to law enforcement of minor infractions, and that in turn matters, because students who are arrested in school, and especially students who are arrested in school and that arrest results in a court appearance, have a lower probability of graduating from high school, even one event for a given student, and that obviously is a terrible societal price to pay and a potentially disastrous result for the student. So, that's an important question that needs input from you folks. I have some others here. My point is that this needs to be treated as a set of high-level questions that the board needs to drive, not ask a committee or Administration to draft something independently and come back and tweak it a little bit and rubber stamp it. Thank you.
Matt, that was great questions. If you would be kind enough, would you mind submitting those questions to Lori Rigor? We, I'll be, we would be glad to address those. Mr. Vesely?
I'd just like to say that none of us take this lightly, and I think that, you know, now that it has been passed, this is now the time that the really hard work has to begin, and we have to really try to, you know, speakers have brought up a lot of good points, and we need to try to really figure out, how do we achieve all these goals? It's not that the, you know, now that this is, we have this framework, how do we make it as successful as it possibly can be? And how do we address parents' concerns and make sure that this does become a positive thing for the district? No one wants this to be a negative situation. So, you know, I mean, just speaking for myself, I mean, I think it's important that people bring questions and concerns, and that we try to address those and manage them as we build policies.
Thank you, Dr. Knowles. Mr. Vesely?
Thank you very much. I wanted to bring up three things that came to mind after listening to the discussion tonight. First goes to what Mrs. Reed said. Correct me if I'm wrong, I remember in the public budget meeting, it being said that we are increasing our tax rate at about, slightly over half of the allowable Act 1 index.
That's correct.
So, it, in a dollar sense, which was brought up in the last meeting, it's a very small amount, maybe, to people, but I don't want the public to be confused. We are raising it to half the allowable of the index for our particular school district. Second comment is regarding these police officers that we intend to hire. Has it been determined, or is there something in the code, are they going to be union employees? And if they are union employees, what union do they belong to?
We are not intending to hire them as union employees. So, they would fall under an employment contract that we draft with them. So, they would be non-union employee, we have several non-union employees in the district, so that's how they would be brought up, brought in, under a specific employment contract.
And would that contract be a public document as part of the policies or not?
It will be, you know, upon hiring, but those will be individual contracts with each, with the individual officers.
Would there be a generic one, then, that would be available for the-
That can be part of the policies and procedures, because in the contract, we're talking about workday, work hours, rate, benefits, and all of those pieces.
And going to, Matt, am I correct, going to Matt's comment, it's important to say, well, what's their goals? I mean, all of the administrators who are non-union employees have goals that they have to meet, you know, and those are important policies that I think the public would wanna know, you know, are we really, after one year, two years, three years of having a certain officer, are we happy with that person's results and what they're doing with the community? Because, as I'm surprised the Keystone Oaks officer showed, a guard sleeping on the job. I would've probably not have picked that slide. But anyways, I digress. The second question regarding the police officers, and going back to the budget and personnel, since we're going down this path of hiring seven armed officers, we currently have three security guards, will those positions be eliminated, and what is the budget impact plus and minus, or how's that work?
It's a yes and no. So, the, the three security officers we have, two of them qualify under the guidelines of a school police officer, as the school code is established. So, they could be petitioned as school police officers, because they meet the qualifications, they have the Act 120 certifications, they were ten years as police officers, still have their badge and shield certifications. One is not. So, we would move forward in this certain case that- they have the Act 120 certifications, they were 10 years as police officers, still have their badge and shield certifications. One is not. So we would move forward, in this certain case, that we could start with two police officers and one security guard. And that's what I mean by, we're going to take the process slowly and do it the right way. Once the policies, procedures, and practices are all in place, we would begin the hiring process, we would be looking for police officers. If that's, person that's a security guard that doesn't qualify under the parameters that I just discussed, he would be replaced by a police officer upon his retirement. I wouldn't force him out, chase him out, fire him, remove him, nothing.
Or she, Dr. Manarino.
The one we have.
Oh, okay.
The one we have, he's a man. So, so that's, that's how the process moving forward looks. Now, with that being said, the two security guards that we have that I know under the qualification standards would qualify, doesn't mean they would become school police officers until we have the job description, the policies, the practices, and the procedures completed, to then move forward with them being police officers.
And with the impact of the budget, do we have a timeline, or is it pretty open-ended? We have to get all the policies right before? We're not going to say, oh, well, we need to have this in place by first day of school in August?
I'd like it to be, but if it's, if, if we're rushing with it's May 10th, then-
Well, and the board doesn't meet often in the summer.
We don't, we meet in an executive session in July, we meet in June, July, and one meeting in August. And if it's not realistic for us to get that process done, then it doesn't get done. But the budget has seven security officer salaries in it. That salary will be the same for the school police. And we've, I've looked to see where that number fits in those, those districts that have school police, and we're about the midpoint. So there's several school police departments that pay more than what we're looking for, and there's several school police departments that pay less than the number that we have budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vesely. One individual, Chrissy Evans?
Hi, Chrissy Evans, 204 Grove Avenue.